About the regular meeting, 2.02 is the pledge. And Mr. Wood has some students that are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Lucas, Ryland, Georgia, Tyler, and Berkeley. You can come. And if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well done, guys. Very well done. 2.03 is adoption of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for February 5th, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be adopted as presented. So moved?
Second.
So moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 3.01, Batel Elementary presentation. Mr. Wood.
Good evening, President Parks, Dr. Stevens, members of the Board. It's my pleasure to hold the school board meeting this evening here at Batel. I want to thank the children for coming. You did an excellent job on the pledge. So that's always good to see you here. So this next part, once it comes up... I think it works behind the back. Ooh, too far. Next part, I wanted to talk a little bit about academics, attendance, and behavior. We've worked really hard this year to focus on these three areas. I think the big thing is, we made a commitment as a staff to really get to know the whole child, to focus on the relationships with our parents, as well as the community. Really proud to share with you that right now, compared to last year, we have decreased our behaviors, our referrals, our suspensions by 50% from last year at this time to this year. Our attendance has improved by 20%. We were at 65% at this time last year. We're at 85% this year. And our reading and math growth has risen considerably from last year to this year, 12%, 10%. If we can double that, I'll be really happy by the end of the year. And we can show some really good scores. And I know Holly Parks will be proud of that. So that equals to positive success. Next, a little bit piece of our positive success is Mrs. Kay is going to talk about the U-Fly program.
Good evening. Welcome, family, friends, the board, administrators, educators, to Batel Elementary, home of the Bobcats. I am Angie Kuharsky, interventionist here at Batel. And I'd like to take a few minutes to talk to you about a wonderful program that we have implemented here at Batel Elementary. But first of all, I would like to thank the families, parents, and guardians of our students. You are our students' first teacher. You are invaluable to us. And on behalf of Batel, I'd like to thank you and recognize you and let you know we appreciate you for advocating for your children and being a part of the Batel family. So thank you, families and guardians. The intervention team has implemented the University of Florida Literacy Institute's Foundation Program, commonly referred to as U-Fly. We have two staff members, Kathy Troyola, Blanca Villalobas, who are instrumental in ensuring the success of this program. They work very extremely expertly and effectively in their small groups in implementing this program. This program is both evidence-based and research-based, and it aligns directly with the science of reading. It centers on an explicit and systematic approach to learning, and it focuses on the foundational skills that is needed for our early readers. It is also cost-effective. The program has been expanded to our exceptional learners department. And I am happy to say that in 2025, 2026, our K-1 teachers will also take advantage of its benefits in their classrooms. Mr. Wood spoke about our rising trend in academics with our Batel students. And as we know, there isn't any one program that meets the needs of all of our students. There are many ways that our students need to succeed. This program, U-Fly, is just one instrument in the orchestra of our students' learning. Many factors and people are involved in the success of our students. And here at Batel Elementary, we consider the whole child, as Mr. Wood had mentioned, and the resources and staff members that are needed to make all of our students successful. It is through the experience, the personal relationships, the dedication, the knowledge base, and the highly qualified, effective educators at Batel Elementary, both classified and certified, that makes our school a success story. And I'd like to recognize our administrators and our teachers here. Our teachers are able to hone in on the strengths and the needs of all their students. And through a collaborative process, we are able to meet the needs of all of our students. And this way, every child at Batel Elementary gets an individualized form of instruction that best meets their needs. It is the structure that is in place at Batel Elementary that allows us to effectively and efficiently execute a student-centered approach to the process of learning. I mentioned our focus, as Mr. Wood has, on the whole child. And because of that, we know that a child's learning success involves more than reading, writing, and arithmetic. It involves the whole child, the character development, and humanitarian efforts that Batel focuses on here at Batel, home of the Bobcats. You're going to hear about some initiatives that we have here at Batel Elementary. And that is brought forth to you by our very essential and dedicated staff members. And you are also going to hear about some of our remarkable students. At this time, I'd like to invite Officer Timothy Watson up to speak on one of those programs. Thank you, everyone, for your time and your support in public education.
Thank you, Ms. Kuharsky. How's my volume here? Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Watson. I am the School Resource Officer here at Batel School. For starters, I'm responsible for the safety of the students and staff here. That's the obvious part. It's also my job to build trusting relationships with the students here. That way, they can go forward with good relationship with police officers and good opinions with them as well. So in order to do this, I have established what I like to call the Bob Squad. Now, the Bob Squad, I like to say, is an elite group of students who have been recognized for excellence or caught doing good deeds for others. Also, members of Officer Tim's Bob Squad will receive an official certificate, along with an invite to an exclusive donut party at the end of the semester. I have had a couple of groups already chosen for that, and I'm still working on planning the donut party. And they are reminding me of that every day. Couple of examples of the certificates. One certificate is in recognition of some of the acts that we've seen them do. Others, they've been caught doing a good deed. My idea behind this is we have so many good students here that quietly work hard every day. They cooperate with their teachers as well. I wanted to recognize those kids. Also wanted to recognize some of the students that still work hard. They don't say a whole lot. They stay quiet in the background. Maybe they need just a little bit of a confidence boost. And that helps them get to know me better. We're building a good trust with the kids, I believe. One example of that is a student that came to me earlier this year. She was concerned about her friend's home life. Her friend confided in her of a few things going on. So the student came to me concerned about her friend's home life and mental health issues. It was nothing serious, but it was enough to go to the school counselor with that information. And is what now the student is having weekly checkups with our wonderful counselor, Mrs. Anderson. And the student's doing very well now. So it did strike me how that student came forward to me. Had to take a lot of initiative to come to a trusted adult and report that information. So things are working well right now, I believe. Also, with our certificates, for starters, with that program, I'm doing that with 4th to 6th grade for the certificates. Because we do write the things that they've done in there that really impressed us. And they can take that home and frame it. For the younger kids, we have coins with a smiley face and a thumbs up on one side. Other side, I was caught doing good. And with this coin, they can bring it to my office when they have time and get a piece of candy. So this was working so well. I still have kids. I'm out of candy right now, and they come in all the time. Do you have candy yet? Do you have candy yet? So I said, well, do something good. I'll give you a coin, then we'll get some more candy. So that's working well at this point, I believe. But also, the role as SRO extends way beyond just securing the perimeter of the facility. Some of the connections that I have made already, there's others. One more example is impacting the lives of kids on day-to-day. That's part of the favorite, one of my favorite things that I do here. One of the children I like to give an example on, his name is Max. He's a 1st grader. When he first came here, his first language is Spanish. He's learning very well with his English right now. But when he first came, it was hard for me to communicate with him and kind of connect with him. And my daughter, who's sitting over there, taught me a few words in Spanish. Hola, ¿cómo estás? That's about as far as I've gotten so far. But he really responded to that. And now he likes having fun when he sees me. And he's just a great kid. Fortunately as well, at the Boobash, the Halloween event here at the school, my family was there. And my daughter was able to speak with Max and his mother. They had a conversation in Spanish. All as I know, she apologized for my poor Spanish, even though I'm still trying to learn. But they were laughing an awful lot, too. So I don't know what was going on there. I didn't ask anymore about that. So with that, it comes... For me, I think also I got to explain how some of the kids have taught me more than I think I have taught them so far. And that's a story for another day, for sure. I don't want to get into that right now. But nowadays, with the kids, sometimes you hear people not having a very good outlook. But with all the kids at the school here, that's the hard part about the Bob Squad, is who do I choose? There are so many good kids here. So I would really just like to end it by saying that the kids here share so much hope that gives me a great outlook for the future here. So if every kid was like the kids here at elementary school, we'd be doing really well right now. And I think we'd have a great future ahead of us. So thank you all for your time, and thank you for the opportunity. If you want a coin, just get with me.
Now, Mrs. Dow, take it from here.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Dow, and this is my second year teaching 5th grade here. And my second year as a sponsor for student council as well. And I actually have a couple of our members here tonight to just talk about some of our projects we've done already this year and some projects we have coming up this spring.
Hi, my name is Dominic, and I'm a 6th grader in Mr. Johnson's class. At the beginning of the year, we brainstormed some service project ideas. Since my mom... Thank you. At the beginning of the year, we brainstormed some service project ideas. Since my mom was in a nursing home, I wanted to do something for the residents at the nearby nursing home. Everyone else agreed with this idea. And we spent the next several meetings making winter crafts and waiting to hand out to the residents at the Bell Tower Nursing Home. Finally, at the end of December, student council members and the families met at the nursing home, and we all passed out crafts and saying Christmas gals for the residents. We had so much fun spreading Christmas creeps here.
Hi, my name is Bella, and I'm a 4th grader in Mrs. Mice's class. This is my first year in student council. Another project that our student council puts on each year is our Spring Dance for 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. Right now, we're working on planning this year's Spring Dance, which will be on Friday, April 25th. Some other projects that we are working on for this semester are school-wide fundraisers for the American Cancer Society in April. We're proposing one of our benches into a buddy bench for a playground and building a free-lady at a library to put by the front doors of our school. This was also my first year in robotics. On our Monday competition, we won a trophy and got 14th place out of 40. We probably aren't going anywhere to make it to state, but we got really far thanks to our coach, Mr. Spencer.
So my name is Nathan Spencer. This is my first year here at Batel. I'm the gym teacher. It's also my first year coaching robotics. I've never coached anything before, but I started off this year with the help of Mr. Wood as the head coach for robotics at the school. We far surpassed my expectations for the robotics competition this year. So one of our teams, on Saturday, January 11th, got 4th place out of 41 teams. And then the other team got 19th out of 41. On our last competition, which was this Monday, the 3rd, one of our teams got 7th, and the other got 14th out of 37 teams. We are currently ranked number 106 and 131 in the entire state right now, which is, in my opinion, extremely impressive. Five out of nine of our current robotic students are in 4th grade, which means that this is their first year in the competitive robotic scene. They have had no experience with the competitions. They have had very little experience with the VEX program that we've done. They've had a little bit of experience in STEM, or in their STEM classes, but for the most part, they haven't had a lot of experience. So with them getting these rankings, I am very proud of them. Also, on Monday, the VEX explorers, which I'm wearing their shirt right now, they won this trophy for Best Robot Design for that competition. So I am extremely, extremely proud of them.
We have an awesome group of students here who are dedicated to making the school a better place and the community a better place. And we couldn't be more proud of them. So thank you, students, and thank you to my speakers today. And now we'll hear from Mrs. Brown about Batel's MPG.
Yes, okay. Did a good job. I'm Liz Brown. I am... Sorry. I am the MPG president here at Batel. I'm a 5th grade teacher, and I also have two children here myself. Next year, I'll have my 3rd, and then eventually my 4th. Sharing oxygen these days, so if I'm out of breath, I apologize. It's hard, hard life. Naturally, as a parent and a teacher, I was excited to get involved in the school and see what great things we can offer our students, teachers, and community as a whole. So some things that we've done this year for fun, we did some things like a candy guessing contest, where students were able to put in 50 cents and guess how much candy corn in the jar. That brought in a lot of money that then we could add to the MPG funds. We also did a fun game, How Well Do You Know Your Teachers? Where all of the kids had random questions. And we went for as random as we possibly could, as far as favorite color to like something that they did in their past history and their personal lives. And the kids really enjoyed it and seeing the involvement, and that was just for fun. And they got to pick out a candy prize and just get to know us a little bit better. We've also been able to provide treats for teachers. We do concessions at our home athletic events. We do popcorn sales once a month. We've done gift-back nights. And then our two biggest events were the Boobash and a game night that we recently had. Some things that we have coming up, we're going to have more gift-back nights, concessions. We're going to do a T-shirt design challenge and sales. We'll help out in our Batel Literacy Night. We have a penny drive coming up. We're planning on supplying some treats for students around the testing windows and snacks for teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. So I'm going to share some pictures from our top two events this year. The first, this is from the candy guessing contest. So it was just a big jar, and they had to guess the total amount, which ended up being like 761, I believe. He came within 10, and just completely random guess. He was a 5th grader. I'm very proud of him. He got to keep all the candy in the jar and pick out a candy bar. So I'm sure his dentist loves me. This is from our trunk-or-treat event, which was the Boobash. We sold some pumpkins. It's going, I think, maybe? There we go. We were also able to have different people in the community come out, and they decorated trunks, passed out candy to the kids. And the kids really enjoyed seeing different companies that came out as well. It was fun because we also had some games, some scavenger hunts for the kids to find things around the playground. And the turnout was really good. We had all kinds of people come out with their kids. There were some pets there, and seeing the creative designs was really fun. We were able to vote on our favorite trunk, and then they were able to win a prize as well. We had a lot of past students come back, and they enjoyed helping out at the different booths and helping with our photo booth and things like that. And just kind of bringing everybody together in the community was fun to see. And just to get the families involved in all the things that we do. No? Oh, there it goes. The kids liked seeing their teachers there. That was a big crowd pleaser. Crumble, passed out free cookies. This is from our game night. So we ended up having a lot of families come out, and the teachers just donated games. We sold concessions there. And it was fun for the kids to try out games that they had never played. They were also able to practice losing, which is hard for a lot of our students, and just get exposure to family fun ideas that they can then carry over at home as well. I've been happy to help out and bring the students, staff, and families together in order to have the best possible experience here at Batel. Thank you, and I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Page.
That first picture, I don't know how to go back on this thing. I'm Ms. Page. But before I was Ms. Page, I'm a P.A. here at Batel Elementary School. Just to give you some context on this picture, I was a Marine in the United States Marine Corps. I got out in 2012. And then I jumped right into the veteran community full-time. And I don't exaggerate when I say that, it was full-time. And in this picture, you see me hugging the mayor. I was receiving the Martin Luther King Community Service Award for the drum major. I was very overwhelmed by this award. It was the biggest award I've ever received in my life. But one of the biggest projects I do is Race Across America. And the mayor sees me do Race Across America kind of full-hand because he comes to the event himself. So he was the one who nominated me for Race Across America. And that's what the kids actually do. Two years ago, I brought up the idea to Mr. Johnson. And I was like, hey, we should take a field trip to Fairview Cemetery. And he was like, what are you talking about? And I was like, well, there's this thing that I do. And we have to unload this semi-truck. And I got to tell him about it, and he was just like, yeah. And like 24 hours later, he turned it into an entire service project. So just to give you guys some background, Race Across America started in like 1992, and it became a... It started in 1992 in Arlington. And then in 2007, it became a viral thing. And now it's done in almost over 5,000 cemeteries around the world. And there's three huge aspects of Race Across America. It's one of my most passionate service projects to honor, remember, and to teach. And obviously, as a veteran, I love Race Across America because we're remembering our veterans. But as a mother and as an educator, I really love the teach aspect of Race Across America. It's amazing. There is not enough things in today's society that are teaching our kids the value of freedom. And Race Across America does that full-hand. And now that we're doing the service project that we're doing with the 6th graders... And now that we're doing the service project that we're doing with the sixth graders, having them full-hand unloading the reefs right off the truck. We have the Marine Corps, the active-duty Marines come in, and they're doing it with active-duty Marines right off the truck. We have, um, the state troopers actually escort the semi-truck right in off the road. It's, and the kids get really excited. These kids, the second graders, they get just as excited about this as they do a field trip. You should really see it. It's so awesome. They get just as excited about this as a field trip. And then the first year, they actually, Mr. Johnson has a connection with the Southland Tribune, so they got front-page news. Like, if anybody wants a copy of this, I have laminated copies. I was so proud of them. Like, it was so cool. They got front-page news. Um, but they were like, and then like the fifth graders, the first year, they were coming up to me in the hallway, and then this year, they did the same thing. They're like, Ms. Page, are we going to be able to do this next year too? Like, the fifth graders and the fourth graders, they were like, are we going to be able, like, they were just, just as excited to do it. They're just, it was, it just blessed my heart that they were, that they were like looking at this as like a field trip, like the Chicago field trip that they do. Like, they're just as excited about it as they would be like anything else. But, and then another addition that we do as far as like the teach aspect and having our youth involved in Reef's Across America is we had two youth do our Echo Taps this year, and they were from Penn High School. But it was still a really cool addition. We had two seniors do Echo Taps, but I will say this, especially since we are on YouTube, I do not have anyone doing Echo Taps this year. So, if anyone from Mishawaka is listening from band and they want to audition for me, that spot has not been filled yet. So, if you want to email me and want to audition for me, I need two Echo trumpet players to do taps for me this year. But thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to me about my passion over Reef Across America. Thank you.
There's a couple more pictures. I hear voices over here, do you guys? Okay. I don't know if it's just me or not.
No, we don't hear a thing.
Okay, a couple more, uh, great things happening at Batel. I may have to go back up to the nurse. As you look at our new exterior windows that were put in, uh, if you get close enough to the picture on the right side, you see the brand-new windows compared to the foggy, ugly ones on the left side. So, all those windows were replaced. We've got a new chiller this year. Um, doesn't help this time of the year, but in the summer, it does. Um, our stage curtains, they were new a few years ago. They've been kind of beaten up since then, but, um, I got ahold of Dave Weber. I know my sources. He, uh, got ahold of a few people, and they got cleaned, um, in Chicago and put back up. As you can tell, they're a little shrunk compared to the originals, but they still work. We got new, uh, library furniture. That voice is Dave. Um, we had Grinch Night with Crossroads Church that we, uh, connect with in programs this year. And our last one, if we can get it. Our kindergarten students turned into not only a hundred-day-a-school, but a hundred years old, so they dressed up like individuals that, uh, are, should be going to their nursing home. So, uh, they had a fun day that, uh, particular day. So, we appreciate, uh, everything and, um, hope we can continue the success here. Are there any questions?
Nice, you're done. Thank you. Uh, four is comments and questions from the floor. Four point zero one, representatives of Mishawaka Parent Group. Okay. Four point zero two, representatives of school employees. Four point zero three, representatives of the Mishawaka Education Foundation. We have Andrew Soot.
Good evening, President Parks. And Dr. Stevens, board members, Bobcats and friends. My name is Reverend Dr. Andrew Soot. I'm the pastor at Mishawaka First United Methodist Church, and it's an honor to serve on your Mishawaka Education Foundation Board. Um, we just want to thank the school board and, uh, for allowing us to, to share at each of these meetings or as often as possible. MEF is happy that we can support SCM VEX teams, as we've heard a little bit about tonight, and all their recent successes. MEF also is pleased to help MHS Robotics and all SCM academic teams. MEF has asked the teams to present to us during our meetings, and we are so impressed with the quality of the students involved in their presentations and their progress and interest in making these programs grow and succeed in the future. MEF is excited to share that the made-in Mishawaka honorees for the June eleventh luncheon will be Shar Spiker, past MEF board member and Chippen for Education Chair, and Jacob Crawford, Mishawaka City Landscape Director, and MEF Mishawaka City Batel Greenhouse. Please plan on attending. Thank you for the partnership that MEF and SCM have together to help Mishawaka students succeed. Thank you.
Angie's going to add to that.
I have something to add on top of what Andrew said. So, I, um, had the privilege of attending, uh, Monday at John Young at the elementary VEX competition. And let me just say that our students were so well-represented, and they were so well-versed. Everyone that I talked to from Beager, from Batel, um, from Emmens, they, these kids were happy. They were excited about they, what they were doing. They were passionate, and, um, I was just impressed overall. So, um, to quote this little girl that I talked to from Beager, her name is Kinsley. She said, I introduced myself, and she said, you know, I'm just a ball handler, but that's what I like to do, and that's how I, uh, contribute to my team. I said, that's wonderful. She said, yes, and, and it doesn't matter if we lose because we're having fun. So, Kinsley and Bella, if you're still here, keep enjoying yourselves and keep having fun. To those parents, those coaches, Mr. Spencer, I saw you there. Um, to the teachers that support these kids, I commend your compassion and your passion and your, uh, determination in helping these kids enjoy what they're doing.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add that.
Four point zero four, John Republic. We have no one signed up. Oh, yes, we're going into the business part of this for all the youngsters that want to go and parents who want to take them. You may leave now, or you stay for the whole thing. Front row. In or out, Kelly? Thank you all.
All right, guys, good job.
And then Mr. Wood is with all his friends.
So awesome.
That was amazing.
Uh, we're moving into five, the consent agenda. Five point zero one, approval of the minutes of the January eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the minutes of the January eighth, twenty twenty-five board meeting as presented. Five point zero two, approval of bill warrants and payroll. It is recommended that the Board approve the bill warrants and payroll in the amount of twelve million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifteen cents from the appropriate funds. I'll take that check. Uh, five point zero three, approval of the December financials. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the December financials as presented. Five point zero four, approval of donations. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the donations listed and presented. Five point zero five, approval of the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
So moved to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sixth, reports and discussion items. We have nothing. Seven is human resources. Seven point zero one, personnel report. Mr. Laban.
Thank you, President Parks. Good evening, uh, Board. This evening, we're recommending the appointment of five classified, two certified, uh, seven extracurricular, and one volunteer position. Um, additionally, we have two retirements that I'd like to acknowledge tonight. The first is Mr. James Basir, oh, Baz, as most people know him and refer to him. Uh, Baz has worked, uh, initially as a custodial substitute. He rejoined the Mishawaka family in November of two thousand eleven, uh, as a part-time swing utility custodian before transitioning full-time, uh, into his position, which he has currently and still serves at Humms Elementary School. Uh, Jim will be here through the rest of the school year and will be with us until, uh, the end of the year. Also, then, secondly, Beth Ann Schwitz. Beth has taught, uh, English Language Arts at John Young Middle School for the past eleven and a half years. Uh, prior to joining Mishawaka, Beth had over twenty years of experience in both parochial and public school education as well. Uh, during her tenure at John Young, Beth actively contributed to student ECA activities. Uh, she served as the National Junior Honor Society sponsor and, and intermural coordinator. Additionally, she held leadership roles with the I L T, uh, team leaders, uh, and, uh, served as the department chair for the English Department as well. So, we wish both Baz and Beth the very best on their next journey. Think that for the years of service, as always, happy to answer any questions, but if not, we're recommending the appointment, uh, of those individuals as listed, uh, dated February fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Move for approval. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Eight is curriculum instruction and technology. There is nothing. Nine is business and operations. Nine point zero one, approval of the therapy dog program at Liberty's, uh, at Liberty Elementary. Mr. Troyer.
Thank you, President Parks, Dr. Stevens, members of the board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be, for me to be able to present these two, next two agenda items. Um, as you know, in August, we, uh, had approved our second and third therapy dogs to the therapy dog program here at School City of Mishawaka. As you know, Penny came from LaSalle, is currently here at Batel and Humms. Uh, we have Ocean at Beager, and we have MJ at, uh, J Y M S, John Young Middle School. And tonight, it is my pleasure, uh, to seek approval of a learning, or of a therapy dog at Liberty Elementary. So, with that, the therapy dog completed, uh, therapy school, I think with honors, in November. But tonight, we're seeking approval for Liberty to have a, a therapy dog. So, now it's my pleasure to introduce Bo and his owner handler, Principal Kristen Wells.
He would have had to got honors that he's had through all of this so far.
Everybody gets to hold him.
Can I hold him? Yes, you can if you want to. He likes to be held like a baby. The teachers use him as therapy just as much as the kids, actually. Where, he's, he's two. Two.
Yeah, so he's gone through training.
He went through training. He did great. He's just pretty chill. He likes going to school. He cries if he doesn't get to go. He's a long-haired dachshund, right? He is, yep. Nine pounds and thinks he's a guard dog, as you've heard.
Yes. I am aware with one.
You're so cute. Look at his paws. Yes. Look at his paws. He's spotted. All right. Take it down now. Thanks, babe.
I told you guys, most adorable.
Most adorable agenda, I remember.
Can't go wrong with therapy dogs. So, with that introduction, we are seeking approval of Bo to join the Liberty family.
All right, is there a motion? Just so moved. Is there a second? They've got it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Bo. Very nice. Nine point zero two is out-of-district enrollment recommendations for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Troyer.
Thank you, President Parks. Tonight, we also seek approval of the out-of-district enrollment application procedures. Indiana Code, uh, twenty dash twenty-six dash eleven dash thirty-two guides us that the Board will establish the number of transfer students a school corporation has the capacity to accept in each grade level, and the date by which the requests to the transfer into the corporation must be received by the governing board. Um, and then we are also, if accepted, we, we are required to, uh, post those numbers on our corporation's website and also report them to the Indiana Department of Education, which we will do. And we will file, follow all the code, state code guidelines, uh, for approval and denial of, uh, out-of-district enrollment application. So, the important dates that we have, um, there we go. February fifth, that's tonight, we're requesting, um, approval. February sixth will be, if approved, we will get those things posted, those numbers posted. March first to March thirty-first is when we will accept applications for non-resident transfers. April thirtieth would be the goal date of having everyone, um, either approved or denied and notified. And again, we'll still use school meant for that, uh, email notification. Uh, as a note, uh, the in-district transfer request window will run simultaneously along with our non-resident transfer requests. However, in-district transfers will take priority and be placed on, placed prior to the non-resident students. All approved transfers will be placed based on staffing, availability, and specialty programs and projected fall enrollment of students. On the agenda and on that next slide, you will see, uh, the numbers that we have available. Uh, you'll see the kindergarten number has, is traditionally higher than the other numbers, and as numbers change, uh, fluctuate a little bit from grade to grade, that is based off on availability. Uh, so you can see first grade and third grade for next year only have room for twenty, um, while some of the other grade levels have room for more. Um, if we call your attention to the cave, we're looking at a possible seventy-five openings. Keep in mind, we have, uh, around or just over fifty seniors that will be leaving this. So, uh, that's not only trying to replace those fifty, but gain another twenty-five. Uh, I'm happy to report, uh, as I have the past couple times I've presented it in regards to this, uh, that we are trying to increase the percentage of kids that we retain, that, that we take from open enrollment and out-of-district enrollment. This year, we had a record number of applications, over three hundred and sixty. Uh, two hundred and eighty-one of those students, our students and parents, completed the process. So, at one point, we're attending school at School City of Mishawaka, and of those two hundred and eighty-one, two hundred and sixty-one of those are still here with us for like a ninety-five percent retention rate. So, that is outstanding compared to where we've been the last couple of years.
Very good, yeah.
So, with that, we are seeking, uh, approval of all these dates and, uh, numbers.
I make a motion? Second. Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Nine point zero three, recommendation to purchase, purchase two dish machines and two water softeners for Liberty Elementary School and John Young Middle School. Ms. Chau.
Thank you, President Parks. Mrs. Cupp couldn't be here, she was afraid of the weather, so on her behalf, I'm presenting her request to purchase two dish machines and water softeners for Liberty Elementary and John Young Middle School. She received quotes from Tinkles, Atlas, and Stafford Smith, with Stafford Smith being the lowest, lowest and most responsive quote on both projects.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point zero four, second public hearing for replacing Humms Elementary School with overview from Barnes and Thornburg. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, President Parks. In just a moment, uh, I will have you open the public hearing and close the public hearing as we did in the first meeting. Uh, and the reason we're going to do that is if the public has any comments, uh, we certainly will take them into consideration. But then after that, uh, we have Mr. Randy Rumpola from Barnes and Thornburg, who has been our legal counsel, uh, up to this point and will continue to be, uh, help address any questions that, uh, the public may have at that point in time. So, with that, President Parks, I'm going to turn it over to you, if you don't mind opening the public hearing.
All right, I'm going to open the public here, hearing for public comments. Anyone who wishes may come to the podium. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing for public comment. Thank you so much. Dr. Stevens, do you have anything else?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Rumpola, if you don't mind coming to the podium, because the next two items, uh, that the Board will consider, and we'll certainly bring this up, will be the ten twenty-eight preliminary, uh, resolution, and Mr. Rumpola may be able to walk us through the next. resolution, and Mr. Rumpola may be able to walk us through the next two items that you potentially will approve.
9.05.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead. You're fine.
Okay, thank you. 9.05, approval of the 1028 preliminary determina- Oh, my goodness.
Determination.
Determination, thank you. Resolution, Dr. Stevens.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rumpola, I'm going to turn this over to you, if you could talk to him a little bit about what this 1028 resolution is doing tonight.
Sure, absolutely. First, I want a therapy dog in my office, so I might, I might ask for a recommendation. You can send to our managing partner at the office, but that would be a wonderful thing. What this resolution does, so you've had the second hearing tonight and the first hearing a month ago, there are statutory requirements about the hearing as well as the resolution that you're considering now. This resolution contains basically all the information that, and I know Lisa Huntington is here from Baker Tilly, that was presented at the last meeting, and there's information available tonight as well, if anybody wanted it. But in the whereas clauses and in the numbered paragraphs, I'm not going to go through in excruciating detail, but it accomplishes that. It satisfies the statutory requirement to list the information that was made available at each of the public hearings. The resolution does two things. There's a so-called 1028 hearing requirement. Anytime you're doing a construction project that costs more than $1 million, you're required to hold a public hearing, and so these two hearings doubled up and satisfied that requirement as well. There's a separate requirement in a different part of the statutes that require the two public hearings and require all this information. And so the resolution basically indicates your preliminary determination to proceed with the project after, if you do adopt the resolution and the next resolution, then notices will be published and it'll set forth a timeframe where actually we would come back at your March meeting for the second resolution on a public hearing on that. But this will just allow us to continue the approval process to proceed with the bond issuance. The resolution itself does indicate the bonds would be in an amount not to exceed $45 million. That is a not-to-exceed maximum. It's possible and likely that it'll be somewhat less than that, but to go through this approval process, we want to have a high enough number so we don't have to come back and repeat it. If we said $38 million and the project ended up being $38.01, we'd have to come back all the way through the process. So it's a, it's a high-side maximum. Now, just a couple of highlights. If, we're looking at a bond issue of about 20 years. The lease, if you looked at it, it said 22 years, and the lease tends to always be a little bit longer. And when the bonds ultimately are sold, if you proceed, the bond, the lease terms will match the bond terms. And so that's how that works. The bond interest rate is set at 5%. Again, that's a maximum. We expect it to be somewhat less than that. It's a tax-exempt bond. The balance of the information, I won't go through, it gets into minutia, but it is required statutorily, so it's in the resolution. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, and again, Lisa can help with that as well. That is, that resolution, and I'll stop now, and I can speak to the second resolution when it comes before you.
Very good, sir. So at this time, if there are no questions from the Board on item 9.05, we are seeking your approval of that 1028 preliminary determination resolution as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 9.06, approval of amendment resolution approving issuance of bonds by the Mishawaka 2001 Building Corporation. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you again, President Parks. And again, Randy Rumpola's doing such a fine job, I'm going to let him continue to explain this resolution as well.
I have to do a good job as a therapy dog here, I gotta show up. So this resolution approves a form of lease addendum. The bonds that you're contemplating issuing would be lease rental revenue bonds. Just to step back for a minute, there are two ways that you can finance projects using debt. One is a general obligation bond. There is a limit on how much you can issue by way of general obligation bonds. In the Indiana Constitution, there's a 2% debt limit. That limit was put in place many, many decades ago in the Constitution. It doesn't reflect reality, and it hasn't reflected reality for 30, 40 years. And so, most school, either large renovations or new construction, as this one is, are done through lease financings. And so, the lease financings are not considered debt for purposes of the Indiana Constitution, but we get to the same place. The bonds are issued by a not-for-profit building corporation. We would lease the existing HUMS Elementary School until the new one's completed, and then the lease would transition to the new school. That lease would be paid from a property tax levy, and that's the reason for all of the approvals. But the lease itself approves this First Amendment to lease. And it's a First Amendment because as we started talking about this project, we did a little due diligence, and we realized back in 2018, there was a lease financing where HUMS was the leased property. And so, all we're doing here is, is extending the lease and adding this particular lease rental for this bond issue to that existing lease. It is beneficial to be able to do that because we can avoid some upfront expenses. Typically, there's an appraisal process you have to go through if you're leasing a building that hasn't been leased before, because this is already subject to a lease, we can avoid that. There's some title insurance expenses we won't incur as well. So it, it actually is a good thing to simply just continue this lease, but you are today approving the form of the addendum that would be the basis for this new financing. So, we will do nothing to the existing bonds. You're already paying a lease rental. All we're doing is adding on to that and extending that term of the lease. This does set a hearing at your first meeting in March, and we again will publish notices of that so that when the time comes in March, we'll be prepared for that public hearing. After that hearing, then, you would finally approve the form of the lease. The lease would be executed. The building corporation would likely meet that week or the week following, and we would publish notice of that. Once all that's done, we would really get into the bond sale process, and that's where kind of Baker Tilly will take over with the offering document, the rating agency. It all is leading to a calendar that would have us being able to close on the bonds by the end of May, essentially. And I think that construction is supposed to be starting in the fall, so the idea is to sort of be in place, have the bonds issued, and then be prepared for construction in the fall. So, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, yes, President Parks, if there are no further questions, we're recommending the approval of the amendment resolution approving issuance of bonds by the Mishawaka 2001 Building Corporation as presented.
Move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 9.07, investment report, 2024. Mrs. Du Troy?
Thank you, President Parks. I provide you with the investment report for calendar year 2024. Even though just the general accounts were down a little bit with the investment of the money into a CD, we actually are up $463,327 in investment income this past year. So I'm just asking that you accept the report.
There's no vote, right? Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
We accept.
All right. 9.08, cancellation of two-year-old checks. Mrs. Du Troy?
Thank you, President Parks. With all the buildings, the ECA Corporation, the corporation itself, and the MHS ECA, we reviewed our records, and with two-year-old checks that were, had not been cashed and through the system by December 31st of 2024, we'd like your permission to void them and put them back into the proper accounts.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 10 is policy updates. There is nothing. 11 is superintendent's report and action items. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, President Parks, and there are no action items for you to consider tonight in my report, but several just information items. The first was a reminder to students and staff that school will be in session on Thursday, May 29th, 2025, due to the school closure that we had on January 22nd. Due to that, it was extremely cold temperatures. And in case anybody is asking, yes, we are aware of the ice, and we're watching that tonight and into tomorrow as well. Next, happy to report, if you didn't know, February 3rd through 7th is National School Counseling Week or School Counselor Week. Please join me in a round of applause in celebrating their work to benefit our students. I don't know that we have any in attendance tonight, but maybe they're watching at home. So, thank you all of our counselors within School City of Mishawaka for your assistance and all the great things you do on behalf of our students. Next up, the Polar Plunge. This one comes up every year. We're proud to announce that the MHS champions together will be participating in the Polar Plunge on Saturday, February 22nd. If you'd like to make a donation or learn more, I think you can contact Sherri Kaiser at the MHS Athletics Office, and I believe Jessica Mann in the main office as well, if you're interested in learning more or donating to the Polar Plunge. Next, the Scholastic Art Awards. Mr. Sargent has relayed that the high school has continued to be one of the top three schools in our region. MHS was tied for the most gold keys with Riley and had the third most total awards overall. He reports that Mr. Buckman had more students pottery in the competition than any other school, and the drawing students have claimed more gold than any other program in our 100 school area. Our art students have really made us look good, he reports, and I would certainly agree. The show will be on display of all this artwork in the Warner Gallery at the Century Center, where of course you will notice an obviously high number of Mishawaka high school work on display. So I thank Mr. Sargent for sending that along, and of course, congratulations to all the students for the fine work. Their artistic ability is absolutely astounding. It's pretty impressive. And last but not least, I don't have it on my agenda here that I share with the Board, but a special thank you tonight to Mr. Wood and Batel for hosting us. I know putting on a board meeting takes a little bit of time and effort to get all the logistics squared away. And also, a special thank you to our friends in technology, who also have to set up a roadshow, get the sound to work, and maybe most importantly, help Mr. Weber join us virtually from time to time. So I know Mr. Weber appreciates it, and we appreciate that as well. So with that, President Parks, that concludes my superintendent's report. I'm happy to entertain questions, as you or the Board may have, but if there are none, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you. 12 is communications. 12.01, public announcements. The next meeting of School City of Mishawaka Board of School Trustees is March 5th, 2025, at Liberty Elementary. So we look forward to going there. If there's nothing else to come before the Board, thank you, Mr. Wood. It was wonderful, and this meeting is adjourned.
We wish you success. Yeah. And Mrs. Parks does love it when there's rots. So, great job. That's very good. You bring them to school. It's amazing what they can learn.